Which one? You talked about on the revenue? What number is it?
But why would you guys change that if you're gonna start doing that for electric bikes and things like that?
Well, until that's enacted, I don't know.
You guys do realize we're supposed to go the opposite way, correct?
He's on the set.
It's six dollars. I don't know, we can take into terms of license plates.
So it's not more like the fee for direct was driving fee, I guess that's what it costs.
Well, I mean, obviously reflecting something on it.
Oh, yeah, you did. Just gotta do it. No, I don't do the testing for that.
I don't do it either, never did it.
You wanna talk about it outside or you wanna talk about it in here?
We'll talk about it either.
I mean, there's one thing here that we can change, Lisa. So with the group, with, uh... Oh, it's page one of the expenditures for the grand weather since we started with Derek Singh in September. It's only gonna go to September again for the 12 good ones, so you cut 4,000 out of that since it's already paid for 4,000 this year.
I saw a separate, not in the second one, but in the first one. I did, right, this insurance has added into this now, so that's...
The increase, something the increase is.
And I know we talked about, like, the insurance, the stipend changes and things like that, both the new numbers, those, the numbers that did come were completely different and then...
It'd be impossible to do it this year anyway because it's such a short notice, I mean, it's something...
I just was trying, hoping to figure out an average for us, so if we were something going into next year, but I'll be able to do a better breakdown at the beginning of the year and then we can just...
There's more, yeah, there's more time to talk and discuss and see how it goes.
But I do think, uh, for this hour, you guys need to decide and think about, for the last however long, even when I was on council, we talked about NEIC doing other things. So I think we need to decide if you guys are gonna talk about that again, because the benefits to savings versus replacing the two that we have lost. Like, I think you guys gotta think about some of that cost factor in there.
This is my opinion, so we lost two. I think we should still at least hire one and plan for one full-timer. And then get with NEIC to do trainings on the rental inspection portion of it and make sure everybody is...
So instead of using them, you just want them to at least train them?
Train them, like, put it like, give us like a six-month contract, so like, for six months, so there's six months, I think there's...
How many, it's about 1,200 a year, 1,300?
There's 2,000, so it's about 700 a year.
So 700 years, so we'll have 350 to train on, we go for a six-month contract, like I said, Jacky said, what, $50 a...
$50 per...
Inspection, which is equating to what, $30,000?
$35,000 a year.
For the year, so it didn't have to be 17, so...
So you're just looking at factoring some of that, because if you are looking at taking one of them, you take that one out, you're looking at saving 50.
Yeah, but also at the same time, you're...
Then you're gonna put back in.
You're gonna put back in, but we don't have to put it back in right away and see how the things play out. If it's like more efficient, all right, then we know, hey, we don't need that person, but if it's not like, hey, I need to do 750 inspections, like, is it doable for one person?
Well, I just know that we at one point talked about NEIC doing the rentals, which still brings us into a pretty decent income and then would save a lot of money.
Yeah, I think I'm for it with the training to see how it goes, if we can do it, because, as I was talking with Kevin earlier, like, that is our only means of communication between the city and the landlords and the tenants is our people going out there. So if we take out that factor, like, there's no more lines of communication dealing with NEIC, who do they deal with when they come to us?
You're still thinking on taking at least one of those positions out?
I say we could, okay, I don't wanna say take it out or...
I don't mean, you don't think that, by working maybe?
Yeah, I mean, I still, I still think it's, we could save on the insurance factor alone, not hiring back two people and only hiring back one full-timer and a part-timer. Because if we bring back the full-timers...
We already have none part-timers, I don't know, you don't need another part-timer. If you train them, if you train them properly, you won't have to bring in another.
But Joe only works two days, it's not like he's here three or four days a week.
I thought Joe's here three days a week.
He's only here two, he works here Monday, Wednesday.
And Lisa's four.
And Lisa's four, so...
But I think if we train them to do certain things the right way, you don't have to need that other part-timer.
Like I said, that's what I said, we don't know until we actually do it, so I don't wanna take, I don't say I, but I say if you don't wanna take it out, like, oh shit, we need it now, where do we find the money? We're about to sleep in there, like, all right, realize, heck, we don't need it, and then maybe like, I'm just making this up here, maybe the code, like, hey, we need a new vehicle, we don't have, we already have the mind machine as an example, I don't know. But I say we keep it, that's just my opinion, but I say we can get rid of the insurance.
Well, one of us, we don't have insurance.
I thought they both did, I thought...
And only one of us.
No, never mind, I'm sure the insurance...
Is that time when one tax ever looked into yet?
Nope.
My opinion is spend the money will keep NEIC more active here because of the experience they have.
That's what I'm saying, I say we keep it just to be safe. And I cut 4,000.
I didn't give you tons of more workforce. Well, might as well be good to sit down with Jacky and ask her what she thinks the structure ought to be out there to keep NEIC. I've already talked to her about it, there you go. Are you sure you're welcome in there, or what?
Nope.
But I am gonna also say...
I think you need to do a part-timer to go with one full-timer.
I don't think we can do it with only one full-timer, it's impossible. You're gonna cover the whole city with one full-timer. What happens if that guy takes off or gets sick or gets injured or whatever, then you're, then you have nobody out there.
How many full-timers do you have right now?
With the people who just left or the people who are right currently? You have one full-timer in the office and one full-timer on the streets with the two other part-timers.
Right, so you add another full-timer, what makes it a good part-timer?
Oh, I thought, I thought, I thought you meant get rid of, don't even get anybody, oh, okay. Well, I think it's one of those things, we can't make the decision to see if it actually works within that, in that role. And maybe see, like, right now, Lisa, okay, Lisa, if you wanna come on full-time to see if, as you said, two full-timers can do it. Because one of those things, we don't wanna cut and be like, oh crap, this isn't working, now we need to find the money when it was there, so that's it.
We used to be two full-timers, that was it back then, we first started.
And how that do?
Stormin' and Joe. And they, you know, back then there was more rental properties than there is now too. Rental properties, uh, maybe, I'm sorry, there's more now than there was back then.
What I was gonna say, you're... I mean, you're going the wrong direction.
Yeah, I did, so...
Who we had, are we gonna fire up or what?
We're waiting for you, Jim, I mean, I cut four, I already cut 4,000, now someone else has to step up.
I just noticed that I'm under my last year's budget, I'm good.
Must be because you lost a full-timer in benefits, you better be under. You lost Dave's salary and benefits, so you better be under.
So that's what you're...
So what you're saying is you really jacked up those numbers then?
I didn't say that either.
I mean, the finance office underwent a restructure, so we saved up like 175, Ken?
Oh, like almost 77.
So, there's our contribution.
Jim, what I was thinking, um, there's a, there's a surplus in officer salaries, um...
For this year?
For this year, for 2025. When I look at the numbers, there's about seven, I know, this was, this came out on the 23rd, payroll came out in the mid-4th, so I'm not sure, Lisa, is the...
It's up to date, up to payroll, well, it's up to date...
Is payroll included in these numbers?
Um, yes, we try to keep that as close as possible.
Okay, so in that, what I had seen, counsel, is basically that there's about $77,548, okay, between salaries and, and what I was thinking is, with keeping, you see how the maintenance of the vehicles have been born? Because we have a 20, a 2020 and 2021, so the car line, car five. What I was thinking is, the 20, the $77,548, if Subway Motors right now has a vehicle up on the lot, it's a 2025 lot. That I would think would probably go between 40 and 45,000. With equipping it, we can be equipped and, or having it equipped, we can take it out of car one, so you're not gonna have to worry too much about equipment. It's pretty much gonna be about 40, and I always say 45,000, let's just say you purchase a car for 45,000. You might need another 5,000 just to get the ladder in, to get all the cars the same. Why don't we purchase a car this year with that $77,548 to replace the usual replace, to replace the, uh, 2020?
Frank, we said baseline, the amount you could take out of a Subway, I don't know, change it over to something else.
2020, that's...
No, no, it's a newest one. 10%?
Nearest one was 2025.
How many of those do we have?
We have a 20, we have two, two, we have two 2025s.
Two of those?
Yep, and then we have a 2024.
We can do it by resolution, more or less.
I thought you had allowed so much to my, my...
And then what I was thinking is, is we purchase a new vehicle with this 77,5, then...
By resolution?
Out of this year's budget, this budget.
Might as well do another, I don't know.
25, I'm signing 26.
And you get a 25, right, and then what I was thinking is, in the new budget, we have 60,000 budget for a new vehicle. I can get another...
That 10% is when your real...
I can get another Dodge Charger, the Charger Charger, for about 20,000. Now, it would then save me 20,000 in the new budget, it would save you guys 20,000 dollars.
So we're getting newer vehicles on road?
Quite, uh, fewer vehicles.
Yeah.
Uh, but what's it, there was precedence in the 25, 26, that would place in the 26s?
No, and that's why I'm thinking that we can probably get that 25 or, I'm just guessing, I think we can probably get it for about 40. Because at 45, it's what they would want for in 2025, we can purchase a 25.
So can I recap this, you want, I'm ending the money out of the existing salaries and then buy a car, but then get, buy a car, there's less money left over, but then next year's budget, reduce that by 20,000 dollars to buy a cheaper car, correct?
Not a cheaper car, we're not getting, different, we're not getting Explorer than Charger, which is a cheaper, different, SUV is its car.
And we keep the business in town, because we've gone through Zimmerman's or gone through...
Service isn't in town?
The dealership, the, the body shop.
But we're, but we're still reducing, we'll reduce that budget by the 20,000 up.
I appreciate that, and the Dodges don't do bad work, right? And so they're just in front of the guys that are forward.
Right, we have all the equipment already because we have car one and car five, now, the only thing we'd have to do is a cage for the Dodge. Other than that, the computer, the, we have that, you know, strategic, best strategically planned for the cameras that are already in place, computers are already in place, everything's in place. And you could save possibly 20,000 dollars, and we could give that back.
Kinda gets us on the, like, the, like, the newer rollover that I talked about, like, you know...
How about, where else you, what, I was pretty short, 40?
47, eight, two, four, 87.
So I know we have an easel for some carryover now for that deficit, am I right?
What's that?
I said, I know you were referring to by the carryover.
I don't know if it's gonna be, I don't know what, what he's gonna think right now. He said, you anticipate a carryover, Lisa?
I do believe so, but...
Do you believe it?
I'll bring on that.
We'll have to see, I, I'm not gonna guarantee anything until I've seen all things go.
Or no more of my sales, my Lisa, no, I know.
I'm saying, if we do, like I said, if we get the Explorer, it gets us, the newer vehicle can warranty again, and then if we go with the Charger, say you're going with another Explorer, that saves 20,000. So, like I said, instead of being 47, we take 20, because we have 60 budgeted, we get it for 40, so now we're down to 27, if we choose to go that route.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And now you, our whole year car is a warranty, we've never been there, this is the first basic event, and then we look at strategically planning for the next few years is, you know, setting aside 20,000 dollars.
She wanna get two Chargers?
We'll have, we'll have two Chargers, if we, if we choose to go the route we just spoke, we'll have two Chargers and rest are Fords, Explores, right?
You said that Ford's 45, 40?
Yeah.
And Chargers are going for how much?
40.
You can go about 40.
40, huh?
Yeah.
They're all wheel drive, right?
Yeah, yeah. And don't worry, it's only the six, it's not the Hellcat or the Demon.
It's not a Charger.
So you're not doing the Chris pack or something?
You go with the Blade bag, but if you go into V6 model.
Unless she wants to get the eight, we can get the eight.
Anyway, you know, the thing is, you'll look for a 2025 left over, they're gonna be out there, so...
But you definitely wanna get a 26, God.
I would go with a 25, yeah.
I would, trying to keep it, keep up with it.
Still gonna get the same worth from...
You're gonna get the same worth from everything?
Yeah, no, I know it's the same.
You're saying, five years from, rather than having four cars in 25, you only have three cars?
The only good thing about the Chargers, they're, they're often, I mean, 100,000 miles guaranteed now on road trip?
It's either the time, it's either the miles or the years, you don't get both, so the years comes up first.
100,000, 10, 10 years, right?
I don't think it's 10, I think it's five years.
I thought it was... But Kevin, if that's...
I don't know, it's all a...
I'm already in those two. 40 isn't the same as a regular vehicle.
Anyway, you look at it also, if you're gonna sell car one, your car five, so you're also gonna make money back on those, as well, so let's just say, I mean, newest one's 20, and that only has, I have a 60,000 mile on, or hard mile.
Cause I know at one point with the five car rotation, it was always brand new, and the old guy was going out and doing what was coming.
Yeah, right.
Because we get too many 25s, it's all becoming...
Well, also, we won't, like, the oldest one's a 20, right? What's the next oldest one?
Well, the oldest one pays off, the oldest one's a 2013, but I call that the friendship parcel, anybody basically.
Right.
It's hard, hard, they go into the 20, because it has a new engine, it has a new transmission, so I'm keeping, I'll keep that in a Taurus as a treatment for those.
That was a long time.
But what I was thinking is, you may get Todd's car, meter gun.
Let's forget about the budget.
Yeah.
But is that an option, you wanna go, I get what you're saying, Jim, but also at the same time, the next couple of years, we won't need a car to rent warranty, we put the money, say, you know, obviously you budget for a car of yours, hey, we don't need one. All right, let's put that money aside, put that money aside for two years, so when it's time to rotate out to 25s, hey, we already have two years of cars left over, and plus, hey, that year's budget, so we can get three cars, or, you know, budget, how we wanna see, hey, instead of...
Old dude says yes, because, like I said, the reason we were much staggered back in the day, it should be kind of a jam up at the same time.
But even next year, for example, like, all right, we're doing okay in the budget, like, all right, hey, we can get rid of, and, and say, the 25, we can get a 20, I guess we have that time, 27 or whatever it may be, so we can, you know, still keep it going. It says that we never actually had the opportunity in that world.
The other part is, if you took a five-year-old cruiser, they're not worth anything anymore.
Right.
That's why you give them to Todd or give them to the code office.
I think with the two Tauruses, we basically decommission those, you can put them out for 8,000 to 10,000 dollars in this bit.
Right.
I think, I said 8,000 in this bit, and then you get, you know, if we, like I said, if we buy one now, people, 2025 with this leftover, then you put that, you get your 8,000 to 10,000 dollars back, and then in 2026, with what we got in the budget, we leave it at 40,000, you guys save 20,000 dollars in the budget. And then in 2026, we go up a step and fill up the other car, and then we're now all in, all in line, and then, across the year, you know, we put 20,000 aside, you know, in the budget, you know, strategically planned out.
Yeah, I like that, I like that, selling different new cars.
Is everybody good to do it that way, so knock the 27 off the 47, plus the time to 27, does everybody...
I think it's a good idea.
Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
All right. I'll learn how, just needs some more.
Is your money to make the pay for it, Lisa?
So I said you get, you need more.
We're still short for more.
We're still short, but we're gonna add right onto it from the telephones, because nobody gave me a proper price on those.
That money's put away already.
What?
That money should be in for, uh, where you have the outlets or somewhere.
Well, the thing is, the new... The points, but...
When we started planning for, uh, paying, planning for that, we started getting that IT money.
Well, at the end of...
That's why we stuck that money away, and we started getting fiber optic money. Did we ever get any more this year or not?
Yeah, some of that fiber optic money went to the, um, this building, the building.
That was the back money, not the, that was my...
That was the back, you're right.
That was the back.
We got any new fiber optic money?
Joel...
I'm not sure we have paid for 25 yet.
Yeah.
We just recently get a check, but I don't, I think that was what the...
I think that's what they owe, that's what they owed us again for two years again.
But I don't think we did for this year yet, no.
But that's a situation I think we could stay on.
All right.
But I do agree, we, we should be able to be able to cover the phones, but I think we, we need to honestly have the, we don't need the catalog of a phone.
No.
We need, and I was curious when it came to the phones too, because it has said 34 extensions, I don't think we have that many.
Well, I'm confused, like, in a phone, like, obviously you gotta be able to transfer a call, obviously voicemail.
Yeah, I don't think we need what we have.
Because I don't know if there's any other, I know there's other options, but like, what do the other options look like, I never, you know...
I know we talked about that two weeks ago, I just, we don't have those numbers yet.
No.
So I think those numbers are gonna come down.
Yeah.
So...
Most of your phones are in this type of connection.
Right.
What do you have up there in the ring?
Well, this is, this is what I...
That was the phone.
This is why they're, this is what they have, but they're saying that this...
I'm more worried about, I have to find somebody local here for cashers, I need cashers.
They can't do that perimeter tech? They won't do that?
Congress sells them.
Does a tech to pay make any money?
Tech to, you mean tech, you mean the, the meter money? I mean, it's, I don't know how many, much we collected, but I don't know how much is...
How much are you paying out for what you're taking in?
I can figure that out for you, Francis, I don't have that number in front of me.
But it's probably, you're paying out more than you're taking in.
Yes.
What's a good one?
Why is that?
Huh?
Why is it silly? Global probably didn't have cashers, we need...
He went like a, a point of sale system.
What was the sale system?
Do you know, you can, like, do you ever hear, like, square, you know what that is? Square?
I think he wants more of a system where they have to log in and out, like, each unit, it'll have to log in and out, and stuff like that, so when his...
Yeah.
Right, to that would make more sense.
Well, that conversation I had, they said we, point where you say we got this out here, the book in, and Steve, with sales over there, they will be...
And then each time you have someone getting that, or they're, you know, who's in it each time.
What time do they start? Yeah, there's like, I don't know, 90, 90, 90. A local, what's the reason?
Well, we went with some, how local, local, you mean like Harrisburg local or like...
Well, at one time we had, uh, right here's that, but, but I would hope some, well, Harrisburg and...
That's where we also see you, right, who's, no, wait.
So I...
What's that?
I'm already gonna go back here.
Yeah, for Texas.
So, I have a question, so we, I, I'm having a hard time following, like, where all the raises are coming from, so, what are the raises that are proposed for each department? Can you guys tell us for this?
So I can, like I said, I can speak for us, so, obviously Jeff got, what, the 3%, doing what with Robin, a hire, she'd be doing the grants for, uh, like I said, she's dealing with the fire police, doing what for Titan's Gardens. Her being able to run three different departments, also with helping with Jim organize his stuff, when he has events going on, and doing all that stuff, being relating to all the companies, next companies, all the departments that way, with the police department, their contract raises, that, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, and things like that. So that's like, I can, like I said, I can only speak for us, I can't speak for anybody else.
I, I know with Renee, Renee basically went up 700, she was at 47,000, she went to 39,820. She's, she's got, I don't know, a lot of different theories now, since Marcus left, like, he wasn't willing to do certain things. I have Renee for, hey...
We need to do them, you need to do them.
So we hacked on some things with her with that, while she's also doing grants and stuff like that.
So she runs for 47, the 49, yeah, yeah. And what have you, so I don't understand, like, why we're projecting some percentage raises for some, like, flat across the board, and then there's just...
DPW's one's different, because they brought them up to, well, they're still not...
They're working?
We brought them up to...
I don't drink.
To be reasonable, but not...
To be a reasonable rate with a restaurant, or you can say are the lowest, and I think they still are the lowest, should have been still making more than that, but you're bringing them up to...
Didn't wait that basis, that budget, it rose up 49,400 dollars.
Yeah, it's not 230.
78 guys.
So that's my...
I mean, they're, they're already making 8 bucks a second.
Okay.
So I tried to get some...
And it's working, and they, I'm just going off of what, kinda what you're saying, what they're saying. Long-term strategically planning, our employees, like, the veteran ones are not gonna leave. Getting new employees is not going to happen, because we are severely underpaid, like, you look at a DPW worker anywhere else, they're making 5, 10 dollars an hour more. Now, I understand municipality is different, but like, we're brothers, you're gonna work for us, get experience, and leave. Same thing across the board with either Parks and Rec, or police, or code, like, it's, I know no one's to talk about it, but eventually, when all the veteran workers leave, we are not gonna be able to keep anybody long-term, and it's something... Yeah, so, yeah, so, I know we, we talk about it every year, but like, when these, when they start to retire, people are like, we can't, we can't hire anybody now and keep them long-term, because our pay rate is so low. Like, three, four, five years down the road, it's gonna be even worse, so it's just something we gotta look long-term on, you know, how do we do, obviously we're not gonna figure it out at this meeting right now, but it's something that has to be figured out, eventually. For, for a while, I don't know, for the car, yes, I do, because she runs our office, she can run the police department, she can run the code office, she's writing grants for fire, yes, Ben, but when something, when something has to get done and there's no one else to do it, you're kinda up... Shit creek, she writes the grants for the fire police, she writes the grants for Titan's Gardens, she helps, now, I said, like I said, she helps, she makes times stuff comes in for Parks and Rec to evaluate out the people, and know what's going on. So, like, knowledge is power, when, when you need people to get help, especially right now in the code office, like, Jennifer team over asking Robin for help, like, because of people, even in admin and all that kinda stuff.
Then that brings me to a question, why don't we, why don't we create something that says, here's where you're gonna start, like, the city can give you two and a half, and anything above that's gonna be based on an evaluation that...
Kinda like what Steve said in the last couple of years.
That we can do, that we should be doing, yes.
Yes, because...
And then that saves things across the board, you're guaranteed this, you can earn this.
Yeah, which 100% behind that.
Which is probably something we need to look into to start.
Yeah, and going back to, as you said, people actually have to do their evaluations that people don't do.
But, I mean, like, objectively, I wanna take names out of it, so the administrative assistant got a, uh, over a 15% increase last year, and now we're looking at a 17% this year. Okay, well, like, even at 16% each year over everybody else.
And, but, once again, then going back on job responsibilities, more thrown on the plate, and once again, let's just say, going back to, let's say, go back to 2024, making 34,000, $33,000 managing, who is able to do three departments and do all those things. I think someone with, who can run three departments and do everything else in two other departments is worth their weight in gold.
But they're not actually running those departments.
But yes, Ben, but if things hit the fan, someone can run those departments, like...
They're, they're not running those departments.
You're, you're correct, they're not, I'm, I'm not disputing that, but knowledge is power, and the more people we have cross-trained between departments does not put the city in a bad situation when things do go bad, because if people leave, which people leave, people get sick, people get injured, we gotta have people ready to step in. We just can't say, ah, well, we'll figure it out, because our stuff keeps working no matter what, no matter who's there, no matter what time of the year it is, people, the business keeps running, we have to have people ready.
That's a big business, Josh, you can't, you can't just say...
Yeah, but, but do we have people cross-trained, like, right now?
Do you have people cross-trained? I have no idea.
Exactly, so, we have someone cross-trained, ready to go, so, I'm saying, with, we'll say whoever, me or Jim, whoever, if something happens with a person in there, can someone step in and run it and get ready to go, so there's no stopping of the business? Exactly, so that's great, so, I mean, like, down for DPW or for the, or Parks and Rec? Exactly, so that's great, so, I mean, like, down for DPW or for the, or Parks and Rec?
They go to talk about one department that, that she wouldn't be doing that, but that would be.
Police Department with Renee up front, like, when X left, no one knew what he actually did, and then the shit hit the fan, and like, oh my God, no one knows what to do. And that was a big learning curve for three months. We gotta have, like I said, people have to be ready to go, whether we like it or not, justify, I'm justifying why she is worthy of that raise. And what she can do, what she brings forth towards the table, plus all the other stuff that she does that we didn't even mention here tonight, so, like I said, I'm justifying it. That's just me, like I said, we can disagree, but that's just me.
Well, what are we down to at least?
Twenty seven eight two four eighty seven.
I can do, I can do another three thousand out of, out of training, because we did, I mean, we did forty one trainings in the Police Department, and it costs us twelve dollars with NCTC giving free training, it's pretty much just us sending. So we're at fifteen thousand budgeted there, I can give another three to put us down to twelve thousand. I feel, I feel safe with that.
You can probably build a supply and carry over. He's the same one who put shop for us, you know, hey? I saw you at your early.
If, if council lets you double the amusement fee, is that calculable?
That's twelve five is in here, yes.
Okay, that's already calculated in, okay.
Yes, I already put it in from our previous conversations, because I knew we talked about.
But even doing that, you have no idea.
On the amusement fee, what about the collecting?
Yeah, she already, she calculated that in there.
I have it calculated in there at this time.
Now.
And I did not go on every machine we have, I just went by what we have.
Yeah, what we have.
It probably will, but I don't have those exact numbers, so I didn't want to use those exact numbers.
They change all the time.
Yeah, so that is gonna, that, that will be.
Will it come in?
Oh, we did, we got it in, it's like. We saved, ours went up like thirteen percent.
But how much was it total?
I don't know, it was probably what, five?
I can't just see it.
Five, five something.
Five hundred bucks.
Yes, yeah. It wasn't as bad as I anticipated it to be, because I went higher with everything that's been going on, but it did come in a little lower.
Well, you're right, yes, you're not afraid to ask you today, in the middle for. On one ninety one last year, it's one ninety one, you want to hit this year, that?
It's not one ninety, it, for, for next year's, it's, no, it's lower, it's less than that.
Okay, what was it, one ninety one or one zero?
Yeah, twenty twenty five, but twenty twenty six is lower. Yeah.
You're saying a lot of people came off that?
Yeah, we had like four come off of it, so it went down quite a bit, yeah.
Why do we have multiple grant writer things again?
Derek's was coming out, they wanted to add a different one for DPW, at Contract One, instead of letting Steve, having Steve do it.
And Robin do it?
Not DPW, I made it safe, and, no, that's not my department.
It's mine, you have to have somebody that's involved in the system.
I think DPW has to be separate.
Yes, it isn't somebody, you just don't write to your people, know the.
Monitor.
Monitor, yes, but that's only you can know, know the rap. And here again, back to what Josh said about Robin, sometimes everybody's asking to do something, because I know I'm trying to. But she's free.
Now, that has to be somebody who can put fifteen, twenty hours in a week to do that, and stay on top of it, follow through the process, reaching out to. Congress, etc.
Oh, I guess that one's.
Yeah, that'll balance, because Derek's is only through September next year, so that'll, that'll kind of balance that out.
Do you plan on looking to hire someone right away, or feel it out for a little bit?
What are we feeling?
No, for the grant writer position for DPW, looking to hire someone right in the beginning of January, or you say, hey, we're gonna wait three months, or? Get the training and do it?
Steve and I were talking a couple days ago, today, about grants, what's coming up, and, uh, so, Derek and I are making the list right now. Timeframes of the grants, and what we can apply for here, there, and so forth, so.
It would probably have to be someone beginning of the year, I would think, transition to work with everybody.
So it's three months.
Yes.
Lisa, what is tax to pay then?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I can get them for you.
I bet you should be covering them around.
I think we, we, we put out. It does, there are some things that could use a lot more than others, but that's still nowhere. And I'm just as good, because I'll still go for it.
Everybody. Cause we set up all, we're taking a personal tax.
I don't see my notes, because I don't have. The collection, most of my, maybe it's supposed to be beginning of the year.
No, no, but what can we take in every year?
Oh, hold on. Tell you what I've got right now. I have glasses on, but I can't really see.
Where do you have them for?
Is that where we're at, in the spring?
That's something I think we should look into, I think there's a lot of businesses out there that don't realize. But that all includes, because if you read the state law, it's kind of vague, but I think Joel and I have talked about it. Get a letter drafted, so, we send to every business, so they understand exactly. What you're supposed to be paying for. Is it peppered for each business? No, no. There's no question you walk into business right now and say, what's all included under the mercantile tax, what is taxable under mercantile, ain't gonna know.
Probably American service.
Well, they just like, yeah, that's what I'm having.
America's salary is pretty secure, they're always low, they're, they have, have three states. It's point zero zero one. It's all been done with the. So how do we, how do we calculate, how do we calculate the mercantile tax?
Uh, that's, that you can't change, that's, that's set up by the state, you have to follow that, and I think it's on. Point zero one, zero zero one, or zero zero two, I forget.
Point zero zero one, a mercantile of what?
Um, gross, uh, merchandise sold. It doesn't go off of service or anything like that?
No service, no.
No, no service.
It bounces out, here's me, right, here's me.
But like I said, there's businesses out there, they not even paying out.
And if you're, maybe yourself, there's no mercantile tax now, if you're, wouldn't something together like a clock or something?
If you're manufacturing.
It should bounce out.
They don't pay any, no.
And usually when it's like, um, the doctor's service is stopped, it's just five feet forward.
So we collected a hundred and fifty one thousand to date, so that number is gonna work. And we had budgeted a hundred sixty one, so I'm guessing somewhere around a hundred sixty, five hundred seventy thousand.
Alexandria's hurt as bad.
There it is.
Alexandria's. Cars.
Okay.
With the merch tax.
With the merch tax, so.
Some of the mothers use.
That's a good year right there, mercantile tax, you could probably take that up four grand, sixty five.
Yeah, but the. It could hurt us too bad, Chip, they, they have been here this year. It was, they've been out a couple years.
Who?
Alexandria's.
They just left in the spring, they just left in May, wasn't it?
No, last name.
Four.
Last name.
It's been that long.
Yeah.
Oh shit, this was wise.
My point is, what was it last year?
What was it last year?
A hundred forty two thousand last year, or are we at a hundred fifty eight, so eight years ago? Well, when other businesses came in, I don't know, they had to be selling something, unless. I don't, I don't know what everything is that you're, that's, that's falling under.
There's, um.
And it's not food, so it's not commerce.
Lisa.
It's not Dunkin'.
Are they going over to the courthouse and getting real estate transferred?
Yeah, they're taking care of all that, the girls are doing that, yeah.
So I don't. But still, it's something we can look at, if you get them next, next year.
Yeah, when I talked about that the other day, I did talk to Kat, we got that, they're taking care of it.
Yeah.
This out there, she was so bad, they.
Here, Jim, here's a question, does Steve plan on hiring any part timers, because right now, his part?
I'll refer to my colleague back here.
I think he has two on there right now, how about?
Two, you mean, two part timers or two?
You take it like that.
Because, I mean, as of here today, only has twenty two thousand, I mean, like I said, how many part timers are there, and he can, because, unless he plans on still hiring one, it's still.
It's the same as it always does.
Take that down to thirty five, there's six where. I can't make that decision, but.
Okay.
I suggest you would take that down to six grand.
So take it down, take it down to thirty five.
Make that suggestion.
Uh, DPW part time.
Can you operate your shovel?
I can operate, yeah, see, shovel, no problem, still loaded, I can run that.
Are we good with that?
John Deere.
All right, so another six down, what's that, eighteen?
Lisa, do you know why our auditing services went up this year?
I'm trying to get the.
Seems like you're getting one, it seems like you're getting one on there.
Yeah, maybe the actuals.
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, we might have not got a bill for the previous year to twenty twenty five.
That was one of, I don't know that auditing, but I think we doubled up on one of them somewhere, I don't think.
Oh, I didn't know if it was like we're getting three separate bills.
Usually goes twice a year.
It's good for weather.
Are you, Kevin, is that gonna be okay with the project, it's at forty five, if it's not high? Do you think it'll be, it'll work okay?
It's a very sharp time.
District manager.
He said, channel sixty, it's a very sharp time.
Sharp time.
Oh, Draper.
The ones that.
I think it'll be all right.
I mean, so, we'll make it, we'll raise that forty eight.
So it is poison?
Oh, yeah.
Going under ten?
I thought it's good for.
I mean, we could probably raise another ten easy, because that water's not much. So when I went, when we opted that one for the.
The, what is, what is? For pushing the thing up, push lights.
That would have another, another, our, our rating.
Cause it does something.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Does something like RFK.
Well, what about, here, here's one for questioning DPW, so in highway construction rehab.
We voted to get rid of.
Last year we had five thousand, we spent twenty five hundred this year, now something nine thousand.
Oh, no, it's good, it's tough. Do they drink the water? It might be.
We're gonna put four thousand dollars.
Well, if we do ten, or eleven.
I don't like, I want to, Josh, I'm.
No, I don't mind it. I don't smoke.
I will.
No, I'm just saying, Kevin, I'm just saying, like, over the past five years, we haven't even hit five thousand dollars.
They're every, every, they've shot. And a lot of them are not ready yet. And they have, do they have all the pipes down here, all the pipes for the. Are they at the dispensaries? Well, quite as bad as Hazel's, it's granted. Oh, yeah, there's one right down to more stations, constantly, you see people going in with little kids, constant, all day long.
Kevin, can you sack twice two dollars, I mean?
No.
No.
I think they're waiting.
No, I'm not about to rehab, because I guess within six thousand dollars.
They're getting screwed, because everybody.
Listen, I, we get more than anybody. I'm not about to tonight's meeting, tonight's meeting.
Okay, those are dispensaries. Okay. How much does that cost? I didn't realize you have one of those, you can't carry a gun.
I'm okay with that, that will give it. Oh, so. Do you, CPW machines, oh, one, oh, four, four thirty nine, zero, 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 highway construction rehab.
Well, as a kid, we could hazel to make it sound too.
You know, six?
I don't drink it now.
Four, four thirty nine, three, 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 zero, zero, zero. Thirty five. How many construction? Count to the sound, which is seventy.
I mean, I just reached my mouth.
It's nothing, it's pennies.
It's a good point, yes. Yeah, but they change the chemistry once it's.
It's pennies, pennies, give you three hundred dollars, it's a penny. Now, somebody mentioned about taking.
Give them what, a hundred dollars on a machine, but that's covered at six thousand dollars. Jim, so right now, what should you want?
You know, statistically?
No, two hundred, three hundred. We can't go to six, but.
Three hundred dollars.
Yes, it should be.
That's sixty eight machines. Yeah.
Lots of people own the machines, but hey, that's not the store owners or restaurants owners, whoever profit profit over the health of, of everyone.
Yeah, that means we're only counting the sixty eight machines, the hundred thirty, hundred twenty machines, so if we up at the three hundred dollars, we have a valid budget.
Yeah, if you're gonna opt out.
These dentists are gonna.
Collecting what we can even collect, so, I mean, would we get more?
Why do you need, if you need the two hundred, just actually collect, if no one's collecting?
Well, he said they could possibly say something, and he wanted to.
No, we're gonna, we have a valid budget, right?
Oh, you do?
No, you, what, what, you want to take Kevin? So we up at the.
Reality, the ones that aren't the.
So you don't see it happen.
Change, I think we've talked to, I don't think we're fine.
What was that?
They're only fine five percent.
Five percent or something, so I think if we even, we left this two hundred, if we actually just collect, it would need to be collected.
Is it all about the football field? It's a real big building on an angle. Oh, that's counted.
True. But you're gonna have the same, you let it hide from us now, you're talking more about hiding. True, that's true, well, that's.
But we're still at our kick, because they'll pay the state, and often pay us.
The way out here was the mayor. Yeah, I was out here for that.
So, let's get our money now.
That's his eighty six.
So we can, I'm just kidding.
So you're, you wanna go from just the skill machines, you're not getting that full table.
No, it's just, just the skill machines.
All those, you just.
Yeah, so.
Cause I think what we have, I think we figure we have one twenty five or one, I thought one twenty five.
So, if we do choose to do that, now remember, we have to change the ordinance by at least the next meet, we'll start the first reading of the ordinance.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, have a second reading, which would put us in the first meeting in.
Do you like your mayor?
December, and it goes into effect thirty days later, so we have to get the first ordinance read by next meeting.
Same time you do your budget.
Yes, and also, depending on how you wanna do it, we can just change the ordinance to reflect on the B schedule, which we also have to improve at the next meeting, so we. We, we just put in there that skill machines based on the B schedule, then it's just in the B schedule, like, you know, we, you know, with B's, we'll up down whatever we want to change, so. Rather than having to rewrite the entire ordinance, we just make an amendment saying, hey, skill machines are now based off on the B schedule, and then we just put it in the B schedule, that skill machines are. Whatever we decide, two hundred or three hundred, whatever it is. Yeah, so we're good, we have a surplus, don't we?
With all those Bs. Skills that don't pay. This five hours is good.
Yeah, we can change that.
What it is. So there's like the grace period, it's like with your taxes, you pay between, I'm making this up here, January, March, it is three hundred, but if you pay it after March first or March thirty first, then it doubles to. Well, we doubled, cause it's three hundred to six months. Another three hundred, all right, so to put that in the ordinance, it's also something told you that. You went March first, January, January, March thirty first, it's three months.
March thirty first. What it says now is, is it's May first, it's, it's made by May first, they give us six months, then give a five, a five dollar fee.
No.
That's, that's end of the year.
No, it'll be January first to March thirty first, it'll be three months. And then after the thirty first, it doubles, the fee will double.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, it's just like. All right, now, I guess we have to figure out who is going to be responsible for sending them out and keeping track when they come in. Because I think that's the biggest issue we have now. Well, the process, like basically, so we'll have to send them out, but then the bills come to you guys. But I didn't, I guess we had to figure, I think that's a big issue too. So like, hey, come, making this up here, April first, hey, these ten places didn't pay. Now you can.
You hear about Messer Bricks? And also on the other two. Lee by Haines?
Yes.
Number one, number one in the world? How good is that? We're a star. New York to Harrisburg. Fashion brings our, uh.
Lois said too much.
Francis, we have a balanced budget.
I heard.
Okay, so to make sure.
So no tax to you.
No tax increase.